We'd like to call this a meeting to order. This is the town council meeting, a regular meeting, Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019. And if we could all stand and put their hands up.
(Inaudible) 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 Thanks everybody for being here. I'd like to do a roll call real quick.
Mike McLaughlin here.
Danny Bassford.
Marty Wuzenby here.
Danny Bassford.
And Paul is on the...
I'm here.
Paul's here.
Paul's a call-in today, so he's on my cellphone right now. So, anyway, um... Mayor's Town Update. I failed to make a bunch of notes like I usually do. I think I'll...
We can.
Yeah, we can. I went to probably the one great mayor thing that happened this week. I'll share with you. It was actually probably last week. It's hard to say. My life is a blur. But I went to a meeting with UDOT. We've always been told that the... To get B.C. road funds, we have to have a road that's dedicated to the town. And so therefore, in the past, we've always only graded dedicated roads. And as you know, that we've been trying to work with people grading other roads other than that because I feel like they live here, they're residents here, they pay taxes. I just think it's the right thing to do, whether or not we get paid for them. And so we've kind of adopted that policy and we've been hauling cinders. We've been trying to do these road improvements regardless of getting paid for them or not. And so I'm in this UDOT meeting and the guy that's in charge of the state of Utah, B.C. Road Funds, is talking to us. What a great opportunity to listen to this guy. And he made a comment in there and he said something about claiming a road. And then my ears kind of perked up. I thought, what's claiming a road? And, you know, I'm a shy guy, so I don't raise my hand and ask questions. I just wrote that down and after the meeting, I went up and wanted to talk to him personally and says, "What do you mean by claiming a road?" And he's described Apple Valley basically to a T. That we have all these roads that are not dedicated roads, but they are public right-of-ways. In other words, a road that you cannot put a gate up to block somebody, that would be considered a public easement if you can't do that. So if someone who has a private road where they can actually put up a gate and close you off, that's a private road. If they can't do that legally because it's been there forever, that's a public right-of-way easement. And he says, "As a town, we can claim those roads and submit those to the B.C. road funds and get paid for these things." So, I mean, this is half of Apple Valley or more where we haven't been submitting these two B.C. road funds to get extra money to help maintain those roads. And so Coyote and all this, Main Street even, what's that one here out there? What's that one that you're on the way out there? Desert?
Desert Drive.
Desert Drive. I mean, all those roads are out on the... Yeah, Bobby Wells, we have a ton of them. Even Apple Valley Way over here, my understanding is that where we're fixing that wash is technically not even a dedicated road, is what my understanding is. But it is a public right-of-way. Nobody could ever put a gate up there. And so we get to go through our map and redo our map and claim all of those roads and completely change the B.C. road funds. Ben and I have been beating up the budget and B.C. road funds have been on the subject and we're just taking a look at what we can do with those monies and so forth. And I think that when it comes to... I don't know how many of them are here at Mountain Zion Circle, but we haul a bunch of road base in Mountain Zion Circle, spread it out. Those guys are in a mud pit over there. I want to do the same on Mountain Zion Drive towards the end and Gooseberry Mesa. Gooseberry Mesa down there has some problem areas and I'd like to haul in some more road base. But I got thinking about it. I was talking to the staff this morning in our meeting about what we can do to do better as far as the staff goes and as a collective. And what I... I guess what's happened was let me back up just a second and talk about Pike County's COG. It's the county of governments. And they came out to do what they call a study, a questionnaire. What word did they use?
A survey.
Survey. They wanted a town survey. Basically, what they're doing is they're trying to establish a baseline of what we are per community. And so they're asking questions like, you know, "How's your website? Does it need updating?" You know? "Who's in charge of economic development?" Mayor. "Who's in charge of the building department?" Mayor. "Who's in charge of, you know, updating the website?" Mayor. And we went through all this stuff and I just started realizing how many hats I wear. And it kind of hit me in that I feel like that we have staff that take care of specific duties. They also help with the website and a lot of different tasks. But it pretty much, if they don't do it, it's the mayor's job because there's only the three of us really. And then past that, we have volunteers that help do other things. And I was just... I was just thinking, to get back to UDOT for a minute, how these guys are planning out 10, 20 years in advance and how far out are we planning our roads and our improvements and our different issues and so forth. So I came up with an idea of how I'd like to try to make it better for everybody. And it's going to be a couple of volunteers. I'm going to wrangle your husband, Jerry Jorgensen, maybe even Richard Fisher would want to be involved, Denny Bass possibly, maybe another person or two or anybody that's interested. And I want to put together a roads committee. And it's not one I have to attend a meeting on because it's going to be your baby to figure out where are our priorities? What's the hottest place in problem area in Apple Valley that we want to address and how do we want to address it and when can we make it happen? And so let me give you an example. We have these people out of Rome Way that are trudging up that steep hill in the wintertime as when it's got ice on it. You know, at halftime, they're probably walking home because either they're getting a good run at it hoping they can make it to the top. It's a challenge for them to get to the top. How can we fix that problem and how much is it going to cost? And then we'll get with Ben, when can we put it on the agenda as far as the roads go? And do just like UDOT does. They look it up, two years, a year, whatever, and say, "We'll have the funding for this project at this time," based on their projections on when they have money. Why can't we do it that way? We can go in there and just say that we're going to pave Rome Way because that's the hot button or we're going to do Gooseberry Mesa Road. Just if we did from the current chip seal out to the curve down there, we find out how much is it, when could we put the money together? And if it's 18 months from now, we put that on a calendar and we start saving for it out of our B.C. road funds or whatever. And we actually try to put some of these things on a calendar that's going to help us create, you know, a want list, a needs list, you know, and have some organization to it. There's some of the stuff we can't afford at maybe chip seal, but today we probably say, "You know what will help that if we just did road base?" And this is how much it's going to cost. And so we go through these and figure out how many of them can we fix right now and then three months from now, we'll have more B.C. road funds, we'll do these three more months from now. And I just think if we have a committee that is in charge of that, it takes it off of me from having to be out there looking at all these roads to figure out what are we going to do next because I get pulled so many different directions, it's easy to get distracted. And I think having some key people to look at that stuff, it's going to be heaven to the community because we're going to have someone that cares about the roads, that's out there every day, that that's their job is to take a look at it. It's only a meeting a month. I think we can figure this out and we can help come up with solutions, cost-effective solutions, recommended prioritization levels based on, you know, feedbacks in the community and where we feel like that we have the hottest button issues. And obviously, if we have some low-cost fixes on some of these, like stuff that Richard Fisher's been doing and Matt Jessup has been doing, we have those kind of issues where with some, you know, gas money and some volunteer help, we've been fixing some roads. Some of those, when we have that kind of participation, those can go to the front of the line and we can kind of work that direction. So, anyway, I'd love to see if I can engage four or five of these people to have a committee meet once a month and let's start the dialogue and start the process on saying, "Okay, I'll tell you what, before the next meeting, I'm going to figure out how much this is going to cost to chip and seal Rome Way to improve that," for example. And we kind of jump off from there. Anyway, I...
Do we have any idea what the amount of the funds that we're going to get from the Dixie Road or this county?
Are you talking about B.C. funds?
Yeah. Do we have any idea what they are?
What's our B.C. funds? There's a lot of explanation of that, but...
Yeah, so we currently get $70,000 per year and by adding mileage, so our total mileage right now is 36 miles, I think. And by, what was the word? Not adopting, but...
Claiming.
By claiming the additional roads, every mile of road that we claim increases that revenue proportionally.
And we get that once a year or does it come in increments or...
It comes bimonthly, every two months.
Every two months?
So there's... As far as the... What we can do with that money, one of those things is pay our gateway payment, which is pretty much all of that. So, you know, those funds are allowed to just pay those, but I'd like to make sure that we, you know, because there's money in our budget for some of the gateway payment. I just want to make sure that we're doing road improvements and we've got to figure out how much that's going to be. We come up with a budget, we'll work with Ben on that stuff and then we'll start knocking out some of these projects. Richard Fisher?
So we should be able to claim roads all the way out to Canaan, all the way to the Gap, all the way up to the golf course. I mean, every road that's in our property, you know, in our town boundaries right now, right?
Exactly. Yeah, we've got 20 square miles of town and there's a lot of roads in there.
There's a lot of roads right now. And whoever's... We want to grade or fix or maintain because everybody says they're, you know, proud of it. But if we get to claim them, that's going to be a lot of income to help us actually start fixing those.
Yes. Part two.
We don't want to take care of the roads we've got right now. So, well, is this... What is the...
Part of the...
Is this a big thing now?
Well, for me, the big thing is we're...
The access is horrible right now on a lot of roads that we're saying we're going to take on.
I totally agree with you.
But the more roads we're claiming during the road, the more money we're going to get to be able to take care of the roads.
But... And what are we doing with the money right now then?
So we're not accepting any more liability by claiming the roads. We already have liability for those roads. So we're not actually accepting any more responsibility for it. We're just getting more money to be able to help take care of them.
Let me answer your question. Let me answer your question for you. Give me a minute, okay? So what we've been doing in the past is based on, you know, the past administration, what Rick Moser started is, is if it's not dedicated, we can't take the blade out there, we can't work on it. And so I've kind of changed that thought process, trying to say, "Let's go out there and let's grade more of them and let's improve all of them." And we want to haul cinders. We've got a permit in place now. That took me two months to get in place to get a permit.
That don't meet the requirements. Cinders don't meet the requirements. That's all I'm saying.
What requirement is?
Fire requirements.
Well, they don't meet the requirements right now.
They have requirements now.
Yeah, well, if we're going to do it, I mean, I don't know why we're... I just don't get... I don't get why.
The cinders, once the cinders get mixed in in the mud, that road's turned out really rock hard. You drive anything on one of those roads.
It's trying to make them better with what we have because we don't have millions of dollars to do these improvements on some of these rural roads that are not.
Cinders are an inexpensive way to help start bringing up the quality of our roads around here.
Okay.
The guys in Colorado City have been doing it for years and they've slowly, slowly got a bunch of roads you can actually drive a fire truck on from what they had.
Sheep Bridge is a good example. No.
Sorry?
Sheep Bridge Road is a good example of the cinders on it that they've made it really nice.
Well, and Main Street out there.
Yeah, Main Street.
The county hauled cinders on all that and mixed that with dirt.
Yeah.
Made the road base and that made road base at the cinders. And now that's a passable road even when it's wet. To a point, I mean, we have a lot of...
To a point, yeah. I mean, just like Main Street, it's passable sometimes and sometimes not. It's cinders.
It's completely passable now. I fixed it.
On the other side.
I was on that side, yeah.
Oh, okay.
The part I fixed, you can drive anything you want.
But Sheep Bridge is a good example.
That right now, still there's holes on it, all the way across it.
The stuff that gets fixed?
No. We're talking about on the north side.
Oh, I haven't touched that yet.
Exactly.
I haven't got there.
That's cinders?
We'll work on it. You're going to work on that side now?
What are we talking about?
He's talking about the stuff the county did.
On Main Street?
That cinder. Yeah, well, they made road base out of it.
Exactly. They mixed it with a certain soil and made road base.
Right.
And that's the other thing I'm doing. I've been talking to Dean over at the county to try to get a better screen version of the cinders as well. I want to engage them in helping us create a pile out there that's ours that we can come and grab from that will be maybe even this road base kind of a mix.
But we don't have big old chunks of rock and...
Right, that we don't have the big chunks in. And the whole thing is, is, you know, this problem's been here how many years, Junior?
We got to start somewhere.
Before I was here.
And today...
So they put the water lines in.
And today, we're having a conversation about trying to fix this problem and want to mobilize towards fixing it.
Yeah. Starting off on the right foot. I mean, we got a habit of starting off on the wrong foot and trying to put Band-Aids on everything. I'd like to start off on the right foot and not throw something inferior in there that's just going to wash away or we're going to have to deal with.
Have you been on a piece of Main Street that I helped all the cinders on, I fixed?
No, I've been on this Main Street that gets as much traffic as 59.
Turn south, go in that way.
I've been on Desert Drive. It's...
We haven't gotten that yet.
Is there going to be a lot of that I haven't got to yet or...
That's our plan though, Junior.
We'll start pitching in a little fuel.
Junior, what is your problem?
Right now, we're doing that with neighbors.
I don't get the real problem is, we're trying to... That's why we're trying to have this conversation.
That's why we're having this conversation.
This is what we're trying to do, those have our hotspot topics that we can put down on paper. I feel like what you're doing is criticizing us because they're not fixed today. What we're trying to do is to have a conversation about fixing them. That's what I'm saying.
Get off on the right foot.
That's what we're trying to do.
I think cinders are...
Let's have some guys that work on roads, Jerry, Richard, you know, even Denny, and we're going to figure out which is... Which are the worst and which one should we tackle first so we can start making some progress on these roads instead of just living with them like we've been doing for 25 years.
Well, they've been being taken care of by county too. I mean, we're forgetting the county did take care of these roads.
The county doesn't, they're just taking care of everything. I've been driving Main Street for five years and they don't take care of Main Street. The work that's been done the last couple of months with some of the other roads that we're talking about, there's been huge improvement on that road with minimal cost to the town. And with the help of the citizens that have been helping to put that road base down, it's been a huge improvement. Over the last few rainstorms and storms that we've had, the road base has been put down, they've been able to drive on it.
We've had people...
You might be able to drive on it.
We've had people calling into the office. We've also had people calling the office thanking us for helping out. The roads are so much better. And so I think we're heading in the right direction. We just have to do more of it. And we have to get down to Desert Drive and, you know, where Paul Hanson is and all of Main Street. I'd like to see all of Main Street that goes towards the Gap and, I mean, all of that. There's no reason that we can't have this on our hit list. We haul cinders and, you know, we dump those things and we spread them, we keep dumping them, we spread them. It's just going to get a little bit better the more we do it.
Right.
And that's what we want to do.
At a certain point, we'll have a good enough base that eventually we'll be able to chip seal or pavement. But we got to start somewhere. We can't afford to do the chip seal.
And we can't buy a million dollar road base, but we can do free cinders right now.
So what you're saying is it's not inferior to road base?
It's inferior.
Inferior to road bases? Go drive on that road out there and...
I'm not saying... I'm saying five inches is standard.
That brings...
If we get the road base, then it's good for me.
You've been waiting 20 more years for what you're talking about. Right now...
That road out there, Main Street, had holes this deep and you couldn't drive.
I don't care about how long it takes. I care about them people's safety out there on those roads.
Right, right. So Main Street, this piece of...
When it meets our requirements, then they're safe. Where's like... Where's like been turned a year or two or three from now? Years ago. That road out there is like two foot...
It's just today. It's major concern.
Main Street that I fixed, yes. We have puddles and mud like this. You can get dirt. Now, actually, we've got our car through it. We got it fixed. We mixed the cinders in. We filled it full. We graded it. You can drive anything you want, including a Cadillac or a 30, without getting it stuck or without getting it dirty.
It's bad.
It doesn't get dirty on that road no more. There's no mud, nothing. It's all cinders. It's clean. It's the best dirt road in town.
Rich Cop?
Yeah, Rich Cop, 1193 East Big Canyon. I think we're missing the point that what Ben said, we're not increasing any liability by claiming the roads, we're just getting more funding from the CIB.
Funding to pay for the fuel, funding to pay for the maintenance.
Whatever it is. We're eligible for more funding, but we're not increasing any liability. So if it's free money, just take it and then we'll figure out how we're going to improve the roads.
No, I agree. I just... I don't want to get off on their wrong foot. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
Well, it's been a mess forever. At least we're trying to make a...
Well, the wrong foot is what we have right now and it's ridiculous. And we've had this policy in place where, you know, because it's not dedicated, we're not going to touch it. And that's what I'm trying to say is this is ridiculous. We have to touch it. We have people living out there. We've got to make them better and that's what we're having a meeting about. I feel like it's your...
To me, this is a baby step to what we need to... What you're talking about with the improvements, this is a baby step to get to that because when it comes eventually to those improvements, it's kind of going to be cheaper doing those improvements down the road because we've been putting down the rocks and putting down the...
How about...
To make it easier for those improvements.
Well, I just don't know, I mean, with the cinders, I just don't know how the application goes with adding road base to cinders. I mean, I don't know that. So that's why I bring this up.
The road will be stabilized, it'll be real easy.
Okay.
Instead of adding eight inches, we can add, you know, five inches because of the stability of the cinders.
It's just that compaction rating of 75,000 pounds, that's what, you know, I think. I don't know.
Well, anything we do is going to be better than what we have.
(Inaudible) 102 for West Little Canyon. If you go down Sheep Bridge where the county has done the cinder part and it's relatively, you know, other than wash forty, it's good. And then once it has... Once the county stops, then it becomes a dirt road and it's like, it's really bad. So I think the cinders is a good, at least a...
Well, the county did this part of Main Street and they're planning on paving that in the future. So if they did that, then we're not worried about spending money to tear it back out later.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
It's adding a base to start from and then they're just going to go from there.
And when you talk about the quarry and Sheep's Bridge, the states also come in or the counties already come in and put signs in with camping. They've already got designations in there.
They do.
So they must have felt that it's okay enough to get a fire truck in there, an emergency vehicle in there with all the camping that's going on because today I drove there and there's over a hundred campers off of that road going back into Virginia. So that road has tons of campers. So you can't tell me that's not a problem. That's going to be a problem with fire trucks or emergency vehicles. Then I can't see why the county would go and start putting up all the signage for camping and everything else if that's going to be an issue because they've done the same thing on that road.
Like Sheep's Bridge?
Yeah, people go in there. They've got designations for camping, designations where you don't camp. They've got their signs up. They've got little, those little kiosks that you go up to to see what you can do, where and everything. And that road has still just got cinders on it. It is not improving. There's even areas in there after rain last night where water's still running down the ditch. So they got to drive at their own risk. They take an RV and get stuck.
Yeah, they take their own risk.
They get stuck, but so what does the county do with that? Because the county's one taking care of that.
Well, they call us because they're pulling out.
The county's one's going, "Signs, go ahead and camp." So, I mean, when you talk about liability and talk about getting out there on these other roads, we have to start improvements somewhere.
Yeah.
So I feel like we're getting there with those improvements that we're doing what we need to do to get a start and get a little bit of that funding and eventually work to getting, you know, the other roads.
If we have a little help, it's fine. But we go a long ways with doing what we're doing.
It's going to go a long further down the road. But if we're getting the volunteers that are willing to help with this, with our town that are actively going out there with no paycheck, no pay, and they're putting this down, I think we'll be a blessing that we get as a town that we have people that want to participate and improve our town. It's really helping.
Magnificent on my vehicles, getting pretty crazy.
Well, the number one thing that I see different is just our shift and the attitude that we feel like we have a responsibility to fix those roads to begin with. This is before I even knew we had B.C. road funds possibly available. I've been heading that direction, wanting to improve those because I drive out there, you'll look at Paul Hanson's house where he wants to build, and I'm worried about getting stuck. And, you know, heaven forbid we have to send a fire truck or ambulance or something else. I decided back then that we've got to change this. We have to do something better for everybody. And that's why I've been pushing that direction. And I want... I've been counting, Ben, on, you know, what do we have available in these funds without dipping into the general fund that allows us to go out and buy some road base, allows us to even... that allows us to go out and buy some road base, allows us to even, uh, we've got to look at, do we want to, um, buy a truck or not? I've had Danny Bass and myself have both been scouring the planet for a, a used truck that is twenty-six thousand pounds or less so we can have any driver drive it. And we don't have to have a CDL. And, uh, our truck out here is, um, you know, um, we just don't have anybody that can even drive the thing if we wanted to. So, but anyway, I, I feel like that, uh, that's possibly a move that we need to do. We can, uh, invest in, in the equipment that's going to help us achieve the goal of improving all those roads out there. Because it, it just takes us working at it every day. You guys in a month's time have fixed, you know, a few miles of road. And I get people telling me that, thanks for doing it. And, uh, Lee Fraley is here. You drive on those roads. Is it better than what it was?
It's a wonderful addition. Everybody's just really pleased.
You know, and that's, that's what it takes. And it's just, it's a, it's a layer of cinders down and now we'll have to do that layer again because those, those are going to get compacted in. But, you know, these, what I love about the cinders is we don't have to pay for them, other than all of that.
That's, that's, that's the best thing. As a town, we get all the cinders for free. We, we don't, all, all we're paying for is truck time and, and the fuel that's to get them here. And then all the labor to put it down and grade, and we've been donating all that.
And the other, and the other part of it is, is the, uh, uh, road base has got to come from down the hill. So you're looking, I, I bought three loads of road base out here in Mel's Line Circles. Fifteen hundred bucks to buy three loads of road base delivered. So.
I think it's good even if we just put the, the cinders down now because if we wait until we have enough money to do the roads perfectly, how bad are the roads going to be by that point? So if we do the cinders now, just, you know, trying to help it out a little bit.
Well, I just want to make them better. And that's why I'd like to have some of these guys that do this for a living on a committee that helps say, here's what would fix Gooseberry Mesa. You guys, when that thing rains, it's a mess over there. What can we do to make life better over there? And then we, you know, map it out, chart it out, and if it takes some engineering, we can even, uh, do some of that. But it's, but for the most part, it's a matter of just deciding, you know, will we fix this half model road if we did this? Okay, when can we do it? What do we need to do to make it happen? And that's the whole goal is to make life better here by proactively going after this stuff instead of just handling complaint after complaint, you know? Or in this case, most people aren't even complaining. I don't have anybody from Desert Drive complaining about the road. But when I go out on it, I'm like, I'd be complaining. So anyway, my, my point is, is I'd like to make life better and that's, uh, that's my goal.
Let me know when I'm, I'll be there.
Yeah. We'll, uh, we'll get something on, I gotta talk to Jerry Jorgensen. Let's find a day of the week that works and, uh, maybe we'll have a couple meetings a month at first.
Dog do it Tuesday or Wednesday.
All right, sounds good.
Otherwise, we're good.
Anyway, at some point, uh, that's, uh, we'll make that happen. A couple of things that, uh, I think that's it for, um, Mayor's update. Let's, uh, move on to item number one, elections by mail-in resolution. And I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Michelle.
Um, so I just had asked the council what type of election we wanted to hold this year. The county, the state actually allows for each municipality to choose whether or not they want to hold a vote by mail election or if they want to have people coming in to like the town hall to, to, for the election. And, um, so I have talked with the county and asked them how much it would cost to have the county help us do a, a vote by mail election. And I've talked with the mayor. Um, some of the things that the county can do for us is that they can print our ballots for us. Um, those ballots will be programmed ballots, which means that they can electronically count them as well as verify all the signatures. Um, and they'll also mail them all out for us and then they'll be mailed back to the county where they will count them. Um, if we go that route, we will also have a box where people can bring their mail-in ballots into the office here and deposit them into the election ballot box. So, um, that was an option because with that, every registered voter within the town will actually receive a ballot to their home, which gives them time to look at all the candidates, to research the candidates. It gives them the opportunity to fill it out at home and then to mail it back, uh, or just bring it into the town hall if they choose. So what we have to do with that is if the town council chooses to vote by mail, we just have to alert the, notify the lieutenant governor's office that we are, our municipality is going to do a vote by mail. And then, um, we go from there. So most of the pre, the pre-voting, like coming in as a candidate, all of that still is held here in the town hall. Um, you'll come and talk to me about that.
Are you talking about a, a primary election situation and then we still vote here? Is that what you're saying or is that still mail-in?
No, that, yeah, um, that's still the mail-in. But, well, for a primary, we'll probably just hold it here. It depends on how many people we even have, if we have a primary or not. Depends on how many people we have decide to run. So depending on what happens, we'll make those decisions when that happens. But we just have to notify the state, um, of what type of an election we're going to hold for the actual, um, election.
Michelle, is that just for our stuff or is that for when we vote for president and all that stuff?
This is just for our municipal, municipal elections for this year.
For our, our own town?
Yes. The county has already moved to vote by mail. If you notice for the, the previous election, we probably received a ballot in the mail. So the county's already gone that direction and a lot of the municipalities are going that direction as well. There's very few that are actually holding those walk-in elections with polling places, polling locations.
What was the number you shared with me, um, the turnout?
Um, it's about an eighty percent increase in, um.
Participation as well. Compared to, to people that walk down here, they're not likely voters if they can mail it in, so. Anyway, I'm, I, I move that we, um, accept, um, resolution number R dash two thousand nineteen dash oh three. Resolution approved, vote by mail for the two thousand nineteen municipal elections.
Do I second motion?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And, um, road crater repairs. Test is a invoice. I think the last time we did this, uh, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars repairing a road crater. And this time it's fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Is the estimate on it. I went in and, uh, I begged and pleaded, to be honest with you. I groveled a little bit and was able to get about five thousand dollars in off the bill because of it, so, anyway.
Does, does that include the heater core problem there, Mayor?
Um, I don't think that, uh, they don't have it down here that it includes that out, but it's ridiculous not to have a heater that works. Um, I get mixed, uh, feedback from others and I gotta believe that the guy that last drove it, he turned the heater on and coolant's leaking out of heater core and, uh, that's caused the thing to overheate and that's where we're at. And, uh, but, uh, I get from others, they say that the AC doesn't work, but he tells me the AC works just fine. You know, so anyway, it's a, it's a mixed bag of tricks. We've got a couple of other things that are going to, uh, need to be done. The shocks that hold the hood up so you can check the oil are not operational. So you can't even lift up the hood on that thing. I also want to install a, uh, sound blon that when it is in a low oil or overheated situation, you can't ignore it with the beep and or, you know, buzzing or blasting.
Chucker to the seat.
Yeah, that kind of thing. Maybe an air horn that's inside the cab. You can't miss it, that kind of thing. Anyway, we're going to, um, end up spending a little bit more than this, uh, to do the repair on it, but it's, um, you know, it's, we got to do it, so. Anyway, I move that we, uh, go ahead and get the motor grater repaired. Yes.
I second the motion.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. We have, um, present room tax. I'll turn this one over to, um, Ben, Billingsley.
Yeah, so we are, uh, this is, this is a number that I've been watching. It's one of our revenue sources, um, for, uh, this, the, the, this is a tax collected on rentals. So typically in, in Apple Valley, it's nightly rentals, homes that are rented out.
Airbnb type situation, right?
Yes. So we collect on average about a hundred and sixty dollars a month, which seemed a little low on first inspection. The municipal transient tax rate, so this is something, some people have talked to me about this and I had some, I was using the county tax rate of four and a quarter percent. But the municipal rate, so what we actually receive of this is only one percent. So in the past, I have, I've maybe thought that this was very low, but based on the one percent rate, I wish I had this as a handout, but basically we're collecting on average, um, so if you, at the one percent rate, that's assuming that sixteen thousand dollars of nightly rentals were rented out in a month, you know, on average. You divide that by, you know, you make an assumption, hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty dollars a night. That means about, there were a hundred and thirty nights rented out in the, in the town, which based on the total licensed units is about fourteen nights per unit. So basically what, the, there's a couple of questions here is, um, the, the services like Airbnb, they're remitting this tax on behalf of the renter in most cases. What we, what I would like to propose is, um, so that the state tax commission doesn't actually provide us any transparency. I can't call them and say, hey, I'm on, call the account, calling on behalf of Apple Valley. They, they won't give me any information as to who's paying and who's not. But what we can require, and this is after speaking with, um, with Sean Guzman, his recommendation is that after one year, after somebody's been licensed for one year, we then request a copy, well, when, when they're licensed, so we can request a copy of their, um, license status with the state. And so.
And even maybe evidence of a previous year's payments of what they paid for.
In subsequent years after the first year of licensing, then we can request, yeah.
Airbnb doesn't give that back to us. I know we've been doing Airbnb for two years. They, they give us the totals of what we've collected on that. They currently, they pay to the state the transient and, and the state tax to that. And they take that over and above and we don't even see that bill.
So you, you can't get a summary anywhere?
Probably can. I, it just, they don't send that in our summary to us. They do not send that information to us when I've asked for information for our tax purposes.
Interesting.
We do not get that. I know that you go through, uh, VRBO or some other source. You're, the, the, then the, the people renting out those rentals are supposed to keep track of their taxes. And we do exclusively Airbnb and I do that because they take care of that.
They take care of that. So it really depends on which, so it's kind of a bigger question then?
Depends on the entity they're using because if there, there's so many, there's probably ten or fifteen or twenty different entities that they can use to, to bring people into the area.
Yeah.
And if they do, then they are responsible for recording that. And if they don't record it, then it gets back to your question. But I do, you do know that Airbnb does pay those and they're supposed to send out those applicable, applicable taxes to the state from my, my understanding.
Interesting. Okay, that's good information.
And, uh, so what we're going to be doing is just having a policy where we're paying attention to that. And so if you came in and say it's Airbnb is who I'm listed with and here's evidence that this is where we rent from or, you know, some kind of statement that shows us that this is who we rent from, we'd probably just accept that. And if, you know, VRBO shows evidence of where you paid the room taxes because, um, we just felt like the number that we're collecting was maybe a little low from what, uh.
And that would, that would have to show in their taxes. So when they do their, their corporate taxes or whatever, it would show that that's been.
And that's, so we're just putting people on notice that we're going to pay attention to these. And, uh, the, the whole purpose in talking about this today is to put people on those that we're going to be paying attention to it. So they will remit that of taxes without us having to do any more than that. Does that sound fair? Is that, uh, all you have there?
Yep.
Um, Canyon Mountain Park and Trail application. Canyon Mountain Park is a, uh, park that's, uh, that I have a vision for out by Cedar Point and by, uh, between Bubbling Wells and Cedar Point. There's a large parcel of ground that's BLM property. I gave BLM a call and said, what's it take for us to possibly, uh, acquire this property for the community to, um, do some type of park system there? My goal here is to come up with, um, a handful of people that possibly live in Cedar Point that are vested in wanting to see a park right out by them and put together a, uh, committee that lets us put together proposal to, uh, BLM to get their attention. We're going to have to wow them with, that we fought this out, that we figured out what we can do, when and where. This trail system, this is a, if you go and drive by this property, it's, today it's a, um, uh, there are some trails in there. It's, um, it's mostly fenced off, even though there is a, an entrance here and there. And what my vision for it is, is to have a, whether it's a mountain biking or and or hiking trail improvements that will be easily done by volunteer labor through there. And as monies are, we do get wrap taxes, we get monies that come in for parks. As those funds are available, um, um, we get impacted money from developers. So if a developer comes in, we get this large sum of money. Now we can go out there and say, hey, we can afford to do an acre of grass or two acres of grass. And we go over to this park that we now have and we've already identified where we would put the grass and how much would we put in. And we, you know, maybe even what the cost of that's going to be. And so we, we come up with this master plan and, um, and then from there, we want to start executing that master plan uh, once we get, you know, the permission from BLM to do so. And, um, we want to put these, um, some of these ideas on paper. We've got funding right now that we can hire, um, an engineer to fly that with a drone to, based on this committee's feedback, we want them to, uh, um, come up with suggestions. We want grass here. We want picnic tables here. We want jungle gyms over here. We want the hiking trails to go here. And from there, he'll put on paper what this is going to look like. We're going to do a rendition so when we go to BLM, we actually have some, um, something on paper almost in a book-like format that shows every little detail of that park that you want to see. Say if we look out ten, fifteen years now, what's that park going to look like? We want it on paper today. So we have this total vision, knowing that, okay, volunteers should go out and we do the trails. And then we can go out and we can put in the parking lot. Now we can go and put in some grass. And this one thing at a time as we have money available, um, with wrap tax, we go in there and we make some more improvements as we. But because we've thought about this ahead of time, we know what it's going to cost, where it's going to be and how we're going to pull it off and secure the lease and or, you know, property from BLM, whatever that ends up looking like. And, uh, so anyway, that's, uh, and even the name. I've got the name of Canyon Mountain Park because it's by Canyon Mountain. But even the name of the park is up for grabs if, uh, the committee decided they want to name it something else. But, uh, yes, Lee.
Lee Fraley, Red Hawk Road. Uh, how big a parcel are you talking about?
I haven't decided a hundred percent, but they probably easily have a hundred and twenty acres there.
So would it go all the way?
I would probably go with a full length of, um, Cedar Point at least. And, um, I've got to drive it on your side of the road to see where does that connect? And if it connects for example where your house is, you know, maybe it connects right there. And we have an entrance on that end of it that is.
I believe there's a road on that end that, that goes to Cedar Point, yeah.
And so if there is a, up on the upper end where your property is, it could be that that's, that BLM property that's right by you ends up being part of the park. This is, this is a property that's right up being used by BLM in any sort. And if we show them that we want to put in a trail system that's for biking and hiking and we'll maintain it and improve it and here's, here's our ideas for it. We're going to have this loop here and a loop there. And, you know, we've got to come up with some, some good ideas and, uh, you know, maybe, you know, whatever the, the committee decides that would be nice amenities that we can put in there. You know, a place to park cars, things like that, that can make this, uh, a destination for the people to live around there. Um, I just think it's going to be a win for the community if we can, um, present our vision in such a way that's compelling to, to BLM that this is a much higher, greater use for the public. I think they would, uh, they're going to work with us on this. Yes.
So, so would that allow us to collect, uh, connect Bubbling Well over to Cedar Point then?
To the park?
To give us possible access to the roundabout for ingress and ingress added in the Bubbling Well corner?
Um, the, the terrain like from where your house is over is pretty, um.
No, I'm talking down below on, on the highway front.
That's actually what started the conversation. I went to them to say, I'd like to get a legal easement on that property. So that's one more of those roads that I want to fix for people checking their mail. And, uh, we'll probably go in and fix it. There's probably nowhere else to put the road, but right in the middle of that park, when we go up to about where, um, Rich Debbie's, uh, what's that, uh, East Pinion? Someplace, Big Pinion, someplace in there, it's fairly flat. It could be that maybe it is the road that connects through there.
There is a four-wheel track.
Four-wheel boxes or something.
There's a four-wheel track through there right now.
But, uh, anyway, the, that's the stuff that when we fly, we'll know a little bit better about what the terrain is and, uh, and which we have the, the engineer do some drawings on it. Anyway, I'd like to, to move forward with it. I think that, um, you know, we could establish an initial budget of about fifteen hundred dollars for engineering on this. And that won't happen until we get, um, some recommendations back from a committee that we still have to organize. But, um, I'd like to suggest with wrap tax that we have funding available from the Ben to investigate the possibility of this. I've got some paperwork that, um, needs to fill out. We've got some reports and, uh, different, uh, you know, things that they want, um, that the engineer said that he could help us with, uh, um, taken care of. But I, I think it's worth investigating because I think that between Cedar Point and, and M, the land's there. Let's, let's do something with it. Richard Fisher?
Real quick question. I like the idea, but I have a question about the park we have. Are, are we going to work on getting bathrooms and a tap and things like that for when we have our get-togethers here? Uh, the park that we have currently? Is that something that's on the books or what are we doing?
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to see that happen. And I was, um, working with, um, you know, Travis. That's kind of a joke, is that even going to happen anymore? But, uh, yeah, I had a conversation with him about doing installation of those. I also have that on our, um, CIB list of funding. Possibly that we could do restrooms where we get shared funding, where we have some grant money and some CIB money in order to help install those restrooms. That was on our list of CIB as well to, uh, execute the funding of that. So, Rich Cop?
Yeah, Rich Cop, eleven ninety-three East Big Pinion. I know people love four-wheeling inside that area over there and they, they dirt bike inside there too. Is that going to be cut off or is that going to continue being part of the park? They ride that straight up to the, uh, to the mountain for the most part? And you see the jumps and everything they have inside there?
I know they've got, uh, jumps and everything on that one side, the, you know.
I, I, I go inside there all the time and shoot up towards, uh, you know, back into the leaves and go through the mountain and stuff like that. So people use that back inside there. I just want to know if they're going to get cut off. People in Cedar Point use it a lot.
That, that's a pretty big area, so we should be able to have a multi-use recreation.
Yeah, that would recommend that.
Horses, four-wheelers, you know, bike and.
Right, people going horse in the.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Bring horses in there too.
That would be a multi-use recreation. So, that'll be a multi-use recreational park if we're gonna do that.
Yep. Well, if, you know, if you have a park that's the size of a hundred and twenty acres, that's a pretty good size. And you probably could have a four-wheeler trail that, you know, maybe it crosses where a horse trail is or a hiking trail or biking trail. But I would, you know, wanna have some type of signage that, you know, specifies.
Watch for.
Separate, separate trails.
So that way the four-wheelers aren't.
Or you're gonna have horses from four-wheelers coming along or something.
Anyway, so I'm probably springing this on everybody. How do you guys feel about, do you wanna have a discussion on it? We're not spending any money until we have a committee together and we have, um.
I think it's a good idea.
But I just, uh, I know you, we don't just get to go down there and just say, oh, can we have this? You were talking about, they want, there's some of the studies that they wanna have, uh, and they want, uh, detail of what you're doing. And we would have to come up with whatever the rules are, like, you know, Richard's talking about, are there gonna be four-wheelers or not gonna be four-wheelers? I think that if it's a broad range, kind of a, uh, application where we're going to help manage and, uh, construct something, um, I just, you know, this is, you know, at first it's gonna be us with our Kubotas out there, you know, cutting in trails and maybe, uh, buying some road base and, you know, trying to, uh, lay some road base in on these, uh, trail systems where you can walk in this, um, even on a rainy day without sloshing the mud. But, um, it, it can be a start. And then when we have a big developer come in, we've got some a little more serious money, we go out and plant some grass. So I just think that right now, we're just whistle along, go through our days, and we only have a plan in place to do something better than what we have. And my idea is to, let's put something on paper that is at least a master plan of what we'd like to see when we have the money. And then at least we're moving forward with something that is, uh, a positive direction and, uh, um, the community can then get behind. We can fund raises for it. I mean, people out of Cedar Point just love this idea. And somehow this is gonna make, you know, an impact on their property values and improvements. Engage, get them engaged in, uh, you know, creating this vision of how this can improve where they live. Um, you know, things can get pushed, uh, different directions based on what the community wants and where funds come up. Next thing you know, you're getting donations. We have a, you know, another, uh, potluck here at the town or something. And it's all about raising money to build the park or to do some improvements and things like that. But so if we, if we have a master plan, we have something we can hang on a wall, something that people can be inspired by, you know, we can start making some things happen.
So we're saying engineering roughly around fifteen hundred dollars.
Roughly, yeah.
And the filed forms are only a hundred dollars or twice it. You know, I'd like to make a motion if we go forward and review that and see what it's gonna cost if you get an engineer and, uh, go ahead and file the application.
I second the motion.
Man, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Building permits. Ben, do you wanna share your story?
Oh, let me start. Let me set this up first. I was, I brought to Ben this idea that, uh, you know, some of this cloud-based stuff that we've tried bringing to the town is making, uh, I know my life as mayor easier because I get to, you know, whatever I'm waiting for in the morning, I get to hop on my computer and hear some of Michelle's, what she used to do, her work, and that's building the agenda in such a way that when Michelle gets to work, she has to maybe push the print button. I mean, maybe I'm over simplifying a little bit. But basically, when she's doing these agenda packets, the software that's cloud-based and is concerned it's making life pretty easy for Michelle compared to what it used to be, trying to come up with a meeting. And, uh, so I, I came across this stuff. We've got this gal, I, she's amazing. Her name is Brady. A few girls' names, but, uh, Brady worked for the City of Santa Clara in the building department. And so she started writing spreadsheets to help herself track, uh, inspections and certificate occupancies and the processes and inspections and who wants to have next and all that. And and that spreadsheet turned into a, uh, a working program where, you know, that we're able to, had, take online applications now and uh, the building process is all online. I think, Richard, didn't you, have you used this system before even building out of the area?
I, I know Brady. I, I do it when she worked for City Santa Clara. I've done building over there. And, uh, when we first started building over there, it wasn't there. And before we finished our, our last project that we did there, it was all in place. Their inspectors, all the inspection process, they have it on, you know, tablet, iPad, whatever. And they have our emails. They have our stuff. They show up, they do an inspection, they hit pass or fail, they tell you why. You can see it on your phone, on your email. You know, you have to meet the inspector.
But you get it instantly.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah.
He, he says, he does it when he's sitting at the job. And you get a, you get a notice and it's done. And and same, I mean, same with your, your plans and all that stuff. You turn everything on, on PDF or email. We don't have to go down to the print shop and print off all these copies that cost us a bunch of money and things like that.
And it's expensive.
Right, it is. That's a four fifty a page.
Yeah. And so anyway, you've got there with your iPad, in other words, and you're able to, uh, build a house off of an iPad or even in this case, a building inspector or fire chief or, uh, the engineering department, water department, which ever. But because, because we're so spread out, our inspector's down in, uh, Hurricane, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've driven plans down to his office and I sent them on a pile along with everything else and uh, or I'm dropping by his office to pick up plans so I can bring them back up here. And it's not what you would call working smart, but, uh, what I've, what I found interesting, I brought this up to Ben and, uh, uh, Ben was like, well, you know, we don't do that many. And that's true. We have sixteen. If we wanna call count homes, last year we did sixteen. There's other, you know, swimming pools and, uh, remodeling or different, you know, outbuildings, things like that, that we're not counting in those, uh, numbers. But, uh, all those require inspections and plans and so forth as well. But, uh, anyway, it was just, Ben was like, oh, I'm not sure we need it because of that. And then Ben, tell us what happened.
So we had a, one of our residents was closing on their property and, um, the title company needed a certificate of occupancy. And, uh, well, it wasn't in the file. So, um, I went digging and I, really, it held up the closing process for the buyer and the seller. Um, I was finally able to find inspection forms, about twenty inspection forms. From that, our building inspector was able to reproduce the, uh, certificate of occupancy. But this is like, uh, the, the new owner, I mean, it's, it was held up from being recorded at the county, county clerk's office and, um, yeah, it was a stressful week for me that week.
So it's, uh, move it cloud-based, this all becomes, um, uh, instantly accessible. And this is, this is like some of the things that we've been doing online anyway, where we're moving this up to where inner packets, you'll be able to go a year from now, you'll be able to go to the meeting packet this night and look at every attachment that was in that meeting packet a year from now. And it's because it's all cloud-based and it's recorded and we have this history. This, this building software is the same thing. It's, um, where all of the inspections, the plans, anything that we wanna find a year from now, six months from now, it's gonna be there. And in this case, you know, we won't have any more lost certificates or lost, uh, inspections. Yeah.
That works for all that. I mean, your certificate of occupancy, but the building package you get for Santa Clara or for City St. George or whatever like that now, you literally get every single thing you need off their website. You can fill it out on your computer. You don't need to print it. You can send it back. They get it all that way. They tell you, oh, you're missing a page in an email. You send them the next page. They're saying you're missing. And you're ready to turn it in your building permit. The certificate of occupancy comes the same way. It just comes to your email. You get it eventually. They have it eventually. It's, it's, it's a good system. It's a really good system.
So there's a couple of other, uh, features about the system. Uh, one of them is that, um, if you go in there and you check mark, the first thing they ask you is, is what are you doing? And if you click solar permit, it tailors the permitting process down to just what you need for solar. If you just say, I'm building an outbuilding, it tailors it to just an outbuilding. It's a commercial project. It tailors it to a commercial project. And so it's, it, it's built-in templates based on, uh, what we're gonna need to look at those particular projects. The, uh, so the needs list and things like that, we get to tailor what we're looking for. But basically, they're just gonna be uploading plans. They fill it out and then, um, at four in the morning, when I'm not be able to sleep again, I can review a set of plans, or a set of packs, right, things like that on a particular set of plans. And then as far as the billing department goes, that's one of those hats that I wear. And I can review that and check for those things. And then it allows me to, uh, make any notes if there's a problem on there. Your house is too close on the left side, whatever it is, issues that we have. It, it could be that, uh, the property has to have, uh, road base, uh, fire height, well, fire height would be something the fire chief would put into his notes. The water department, we would sign up, uh, Dale Harrison, even, uh, Rod Mills on this. They would have access to all of the plans through their tablet that allow them to have instant access to those plans. I don't have to go chase Dale down and set it on a shelf that's got Dale's name on it. That's our current system right now. We have one set of plans and we move it from name plate to name plate. And we have to call them, say, hey, you've got the plans here to look at. And, uh, so we're just trying to improve the communication to where now everybody can be looking at this at one time. And all of us can get together and say, you know, through a tablet to approve a, a project or identify a problem in that project, like it needs a fire project. It doesn't have a meter. We've gotta do this.
Doesn't work on your computer as well as a tablet?
Computer or tablet. All you need is the internet browser. So it doesn't matter what your choice is, the, it's, it's available there and the engineer and whoever it is can look into this. So. Anyway, the, uh, the system, um, for us is, um, basically it's a, it's a forty-eight hundred dollar, uh, price tag for the, uh, just the licensing of the system.
And that's a one-time fee?
It's a one-time fee and that can be paid over five years. So it's a little, uh, eight hundred a month, basically, or eight hundred dollars a year to just get signed up for five years.
Basically, we're getting that first-year contract, three, taking a thousand off on it. And then, so on year two, we've got that thousand-dollar fee. And so on. But that's an office, basically a clerical fee impact that we take in for this, using this system.
Yeah. And I would just, uh, suggest that we, uh, we look at a couple of things. One of them is a, uh, I was looking over our fee schedule. I'm gonna bring that fee schedule back up and we'll have to a public hearing to make any, uh, changes to that. But, uh, there, for example, there was a, uh, a plan review fee, but we haven't charged a plan review fees. You know, and that's where we can plug the holes on this because it's already in our schedule to do that, yet we're not doing it.
Right.
The other thing is, is when we have a paper application right now, um, we're asking them, how much is the house gonna cost you? And they write a number down. And what this system will do is it takes that number and it compares it to, um, what the building, uh, guidelines say is appropriate for our particular locality state.
It uses a, a system called RS means, which, which they, they update RS means every ninety days. And they pull from building permits, they'll pull from supply houses for parts, for materials, for having anything. And they give you the materials and labor of our general area, uh, every ninety days.
And so this system will compare those two numbers and it's gonna use the higher of the two. So if the contract says it's more, they'll use that. If it's, if they put down there, it's a hundred and fifty thousand to build my house, but this means system, this, uh, table says, no, it's three hundred thousand. It's gonna charge the three hundred thousand. The chances are they're padding a little bit on what it's really gonna cost them. And so it allows us to probably capture more fair building permit. But by some of these things being in place, it's actually gonna, it'll pay for itself, I think.
Well, it's gonna save us money with the time with the office.
Right.
Help and so forth.
Yeah, he spent five hours. He didn't, he didn't wanna hit that part. He spent five hours tracing that problem the other day. So.
And if we had this in place, it would have fixed that problem.
I think they're just hitting print button.
Right. Yeah. It says there up to thirty permits though. Is that over a five-year period?
No, thirty permits is only primary homes and it's only, it's based on that. So when we, you know, we're a larger community and we're doing seventy-five or a hundred, then that fee would change a little bit based on that. But this gives us a benchmark. When you get thirty and you divide it in there, it's basically about sixty bucks per permit, including the setup fee. It's only about thirty, forty dollars per permit, um, is what it's, uh, basically costing. So even when we have to up that fee a little bit because we're building more homes, it just means that it's keeping us more organized. So today, we don't have to have this. This is, uh, but it's, it's like, when do we start learning and when do we jump in? Because, you know.
Well, it's what we need.
It's, it's.
When she first started, it was actually more money. And it was a lot more money per permit. Because there's smaller communities like us out there. She's been talking to Hilldale. She's been talking to, um, uh, Vale, a few other communities, uh, that are small like ours. And so she's gone in and she's actually made this flat rate thing and says, okay, up to this many permits, we'll do this flat rate down here. Rather than before, it was like, um, four grand to buy it. And then it was so much per month, like eight hundred dollars a month or a thousand dollars a month or whatever it is. And that's what the bigger cities were paying. And, and for the smaller cities, she's done this other deal where we can split it down to try and get you so it's not as far. So.
Yeah, Ben?
What is the annual cost to it? So there's the forty-eight hundred dollar setup, initial setup. And then what's the annual?
Annual's a thousand right now. The annual would be a thousand. So after that, right now they're giving us a discount for the first year. So second year would be a thousand dollars. As long as, I guess, we don't go over the thirty on, up to, you know, the thirty homes that's on here.
A thousand includes up to thirty permits.
Thirty permits, yeah.
For the first year.
And that's also commercial. It says new home act, commercial permits. So that's both.
Sorry, this is the forty-eight hundred, forty-eight hundred dollar setup fee?
One-time fee.
But then there's ongoing costs.
Well, then it's, it's, it's forty-eight and then the maintenance is annual, which is a, a thousand. But the, if we sign up on that five-year, it's, they're gonna give us a thousand dollars off.
Thousand dollars off.
So basically for the first five years, it's, um, yeah, there, you do have that thousand dollars.
The second year, the thousand would be.
You take that, that forty-eight hundred divided by, you know, five years and then add a thousand, you know, per year. And that's what it's annually. If, I don't know, I was doing math. It seemed like it was around sixty-six bucks or something per, per permit. And that's including setup fee for the first five years.
To me, it's no brainer because first off, it's gonna get charged back through the permits. Secondly, if you spent five hours on it, you're looking at over a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars of time between taxes and everything else for you to search it for five hours. And it's no brainer.
For one item?
And it's also, it's about trying, you know, I mean, I, I come in here, you know, first day of being mayor, looking for different stuff. And I'm telling you, it was a challenge to find anything anywhere. And it still is. And having some of the stuff cloud-based, it's gonna be, I'm telling you, you gotta look back a year or two from now and, you know.
As we grow, it's gonna.
It's, it's gonna be nice to be able to find stuff.
Well, Junior, the water department, I, everybody can look at all the plans, look at all the stuff and help move the process forward to wherever they're at. It doesn't matter.
If Junior puts down there, for example, I want that, you know, uh, fire item, it's gotta be placed, you know, this many feet from here. It's on there now and everybody that's gonna look at this thing knows what you, you're totally got it. It helps the communication. And if, you know, a lot of this communication goes through this, this system and that's going to help as well with the professionalism that we present.
Real quick, one thing. Right now, when I call for a building inspection, Lance leaves us this little scrap paper thing, invoice, says we passed off, we didn't pass off, and that's kind of what we have. And I, I'm assuming he gives the other copy to the town. I don't know if he does that. But this system.
He saves them for about six months and then he hands us a, a stack of them like this.
Okay. So this system, if, if for some reason you call in for inspection, let, let's say you're calling in for a four-way, okay? And a four-way is your framing, your electrical, your HVAC, and, um, uh, your, uh, electrical or plumbing. Anyways, so if something was to miss in there, let's say your plumber has something to fix, but everything else passed. Lance is gonna say, hey, you failed. And you're gonna have to call him and say, okay, what do I need to do to fix this? And this one, they type it in, that leaves a line, leaves a little checkmark by it, has an X, says, okay, this failed. So when you call in and say, I need to re-inspect, then you go down there and you see, I only wanna re-inspect that one item that failed. You don't need a whole new four-way. And it comes on you, and he shows up and it says, okay, that item passed. And you get an email, it has a checkmark next to it instead of a X.
So some plumber can look it up, you can look it up, the HPC contractor can look it up and just go ahead and see what they. So some plumber can look it up, you can look it up, the HPC contractor can look it up, and just go ahead and see what they need to fix.
It's a way, way better system.
But I also think we're leaving money on the table on our permits, because, uh, we're not updating.
Oh, absolutely.
Looking at this, uh, the way we calculate the, uh, permit, so.
Well, like the other day, we had an underground inspection out here for plumbing, I couldn't find Lance's paper. Had to call him, find out, hey, did this thing pass, did it not pass?
In fact, we brought Lance into this, let me, let me give you some feedback on why, because I went down to Lance and asked him, are you gonna be okay with this system, how do you feel about it? He said, I'm trying to get him to do it here in Hurricane. It's just, it's, it's a bigger wheel to turn down there, and it's a bigger check to write, but he wants it down there, because he can see that it'd make his life a lot easier down there, because they have so many more inspections, and the organization, the big work, and being able to find information. He's all, so he's all on board with this, and I've already got the tablet.
We can basically four-eight hundred over time, do you say?
Yes, over five years. Well, the, yeah, the forty-eight hundred is, um, basically, that's a license fee over five years, and then they give us the first year free, basically, on the maintenance, if you could call it that. So we just take forty-eight divided by five, and next year we will have a, a thousand dollars per year fee that we have. This all the way, also, by the way, I told her that, uh, I, I like her system, but we're gonna have to wait until July first with our new budget to do it, because it's not in our budget, and she's, no problem, let's just go ahead and start now, and I will build it until July first. So, anyway, so that, so we can go ahead and sign up now, but we won't have to, you know, write a check until July when it's in our budget, we can, we can build it into the budget that way, and then, so in the meantime, we can go ahead and look at whatever we collect on, on this.
I'd like to move in and we accept the billing permit process as, as is written. Second?
I'll second it.
Any vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
What, can I just get a clarification on that? He motioned to accept the billing permit process as written. Is this what you're talking about? Is this document?
It's a proposal, proposed contract.
Well, just, we need to clarify, I mean, it doesn't really specify what you're talking about, but you're talking about this contract.
Yeah, it's, service proposal from city inspect. You wanna do that again on the, uh, for the recording, that we're going to accept the, uh, contract proposal?
I make a motion, we accept the billing permit process contract or proposal?
What city inspect?
I'll second that.
And we're gonna vote again.
Aye.
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 Okay, so that's the recording, and we cleaned that up, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, um, so, on to the next item, number six. Blake Cease, we wanna thank him for his service on the planning commission, he did submit his, um, um, letter of resignation. His job takes him out of town too much, he's missed six meetings out of the six months since I've been mayor, and, um, he felt bad about every single one of them. And, but his job takes him out of town at times, working for, uh, one of the utilities, and, uh, uh, so we feel bad about that, but we thank him for, um, his service, and, um, at, at this time, we have an alternate, which is Lee Freilish, and, um, Lee has, uh, agreed to step into his shoes and, uh, finish out the remainder of, uh, his, um, I think he was up at the end of the year anyway, uh, as far as the term goes, so at least you can step in until the end of the year, and then, uh, we can review it at that time, if Lee's happy and if we're happy, and, so I, I move that we, um, I think we have a, a resolution for that. What did I do with this? Here it is. Excuse me, so, I move that we approved resolution R dash two thousand nineteen dash zero six. A resolution appointing a planning commissioner, and, uh, that person is Lee Freilish. Any discussion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Welcome back, Lee.
Thank you, Lee, who stepped in and helped us out.
Thank you.
And Ensign Billing, did we have any, uh, do you have anything you wanna bring up on that, Ben?
No, the, in the email packet, was that email communicate, was the communication between the mayor and Curtis, uh, which clarified further what the services that they were providing on the zoning map was. It was good clarification for me, I was, uh, it, it, I agreed with his assessment of what was complete and what is not on that zoning map. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is something that we'll be pursuing with, uh, CIB funding. It's, uh, they have a simplified process for planning and zone maps, is that, was that? Were you of the same opinion?
Yeah, the, uh, the meeting that you and I attended, um, talked about that, I, the only, um, thing I worry about, in fact, actually, uh, I was in the zoning map in, in the water district, um, it has water lines on here, yet when you go out to Bogden Wells area, I don't see a single water line on this map. So apparently they have, that's not finished on the map, were you aware of that at all, Harold, or?
Yeah, that's been an ongoing issue with, uh, Ensign, we've been trying to resolve that. I talked to Ben about it a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, I have chatted with Rod about it. He was going to talk to them, we're gonna, with Curtis and the other, the other people involved, come to some kind of resolution, hopefully by the end of the week, and we'll either, uh, tell them we consider the account closed after thirty days, or they're gonna come and complete some work, or whatever has to happen, because this thing's been going on for three years.
Yeah, I, um, you know, we're getting pressure from them to, uh, you know, try and settle some of this, and, um, my understanding is, is a, uh, we've got a six-thousand-dollar check we get to send them because of, uh, uh, what's, I can't remember the guy's name, doesn't matter.
Little Carl Lo.
Yeah, we don't, we need to bring it up, but anyway, someone who's, uh, paid up their engineering, which was part of the billing that we got, that, that has finally been paid in full, is my understanding, and that we can at least send them one of those that were passed through billing, and, uh, that will help, um, you know, them, when they start seeing a check show up every once in a while, they'll probably be happy, but, uh, what Ben's talking about is, um, if we, the CIB is making it easier for towns, because they know how expensive it is to, um, get funding for, um, impact fee studies and, um, roads, master plans, general plans, master road plans, all of that, and, um, you know, we probably need a little bit of everything. The, uh, what's that company's name, Lewis and something?
Lewis, Burnham and Young?
Yeah, Lewis, Burnham and Young, um, their quote, um, was mischaracterized in one of my conversations with them, and when we actually got the right contract, um, in an email to me, it's about seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars, if I remember right, to complete both the water side and the town side of the impact fee studies. And that kind of tilted the scale for me a little bit, where I'm not sure that we could write that kind of check. When it was a few thousand dollars, it sounded, that's reasonable, we could probably have that in impact fee money right now, that we could write a check for. When it jumps up to seventeen thousand eight hundred, then we have this map of another, you know, fifteen thousand, and it's on a map that's not done yet, which means that it's probably gonna cost us more to get it finished, and we don't have a road master plan, that, you know, we're at a point where, you know, you can go to CIB, and they've streamlined the process for these kind of studies, to where we can, uh, go up to, uh, fifty thousand dollars, um, grab money from them, and fifty thousand dollars in loan money is the, on the high side of what you can get without going to, before CIB, their staff just approves it. Excuse me. So I think, um.
Mayor?
If we choose to, yes.
Uh, just a comment on this before we go ahead, Harold Merritt, uh, six fifty-five North Cooder Lane, uh, Robert, uh, authorized a, uh, impact fee study with, I don't know if it was the same firm or not.
Same one, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, he told me, he gave me a figure, and, and, uh, I checked on it in other places, and it seemed way, way out of line. So I called them, and, and again, it was like nine thousand dollars from twenty-five hundred, and so I, I told them that we couldn't afford it, and we would have to drop it. They said, well, we're about a third of the way into it, so we'll send you bill for that third, and I said, well, you know, do you just, do?
Who said they were a third inch of it?
Well, they were saying that they'd already started the impact fee study, and that.
When was this?
This was when Robert, right after Robert was mayor. Anyway, I talked to them a little bit longer, and they said, well, if you want to do it in the future, come back to us, and we'd be happy to accommodate you, if you just can't afford it, then we understand, and, and dropped it. My point being that these numbers float all over the place with these folks, and you've gotta have them.
Well, what they, what they did is they sent me the contract that they had with Robert, and this is where the confusion came in, just so I can kinda add some clarity to why I was confused, they sent me a copy of the contract for historical reasons. And so I'm looking at this, historically, saying, oh, okay, this is what the impact fee studies, this is what all of us up here looked at and voted on. What I didn't realize was, is, um, that was with Ensign doing most of the work, and they were just gonna review what Ensign did.
So we're getting a different.
And I'm like, okay, so then we'd have an Ensign bill besides that, if we did it that way, and I, I told them, I says, my preference is just to have a fresh one, a fresh eyes on it, because then it's defensible, and instead of we're relying on two different engineering firms to do this, and, and that's when I got the new bill, and the bill was seventeen thousand eight hundred. It wasn't so much that they were changing it, as much as what we're getting, what we're asking for changed. When Bob talked to him, it was, Ensign's gonna do the heavy lifting, and these guys are just gonna review the work, and I said, my preference is, is if we do one, let's just have them do it, because that's what they brag about, is that if they go to court, their studies stand up in court, and that's what I want, is something that's, uh, fresh eyes on it. And, uh, I've asked them details about how they arrived with their numbers, they look at our finances, they look at our payments, they look at the infrastructure we have, they look at everything, I just don't think it's gonna make a significant difference in what we're paying, but it gives us a defensible study if we have a developer, and we've got a lot of them talking to us, if they decide to come back, and so is over something we've done, or quoted, or whatever, we've got at least something that, that we can stand our, to stand on. I, I'm just thinking that I've got a, uh, there's nothing that I wanna do today on this, I just wanted to talk about it, let everybody know where we're at. I wanna get my ducks lined up a little bit more on this, as far as, um, that study goes, and on the, uh, the CIB thing, this was something that just sprung on us at the last meeting that we were just at, and I, I got thinking about it, that, you know, I don't know which, what we're gonna try to include in that, Ben and I have to do a little more homework on it, but it could be that we just go for CIB grant slash, uh, funding that way, and, uh, that helps us, uh, take care of it. I know these guys would like to have a check right away, I'm also not sure how they're gonna feel about those, a zone map that's already in place, and a bill that's, you know, going on two years old, and paying that out of funds that we borrowed from them today. I'm not sure they're gonna allow that, and I'm not sure I wanna hide it from them either.
Yeah, it's a sticky wicket dealing with these guys, anywhere you turn.
I, yeah, I just, you know, we're probably almost just need to write these guys a check and get them off our books, but, uh, anyway, I don't know that I wanna cross that bridge today, let me, uh, you know, we'll defer this one more time, because I like to, I'd like to do some more homework on this CIB stuff to find out if they're gonna be okay, helping us pay this bill that, this was, the only, my own saving grace was, this was on our CIB funding when I was first mayor. Um, I was put as mayor on September, October this, when this meeting was happening, and I had to make a decision, are we gonna go forward or we're not gonna go forward? I had canceled all of it, because Rod Mills told me that, oh, we haven't started that work yet, and that, you know, I, I, I'm not sure what he was thinking on that, but, uh, it's something to do with the master road plan, it's what I thought we were paying for, and that's what I thought they were doing, and that's what the money was for. I had no idea that we already owed fifty thousand dollars to these guys for the zoning map, I didn't know it's the same bill. And that's what the money was actually intended for, is to pay for that, and along with, you can see these items that they've listed out on this email, that they haven't done yet, and that we haven't paid for them yet, so, but we've, I looked for the contracts on their, uh, you know, with these guys. I can't find that we've ever signed a contract with them, other than we did ask them to make these changes on a regular basis. We did a lot of emails back and forth, asking them to update this parcel number, update this parcel number to this zone, and so by extension, we pretty much hired them, even though we didn't, uh, sign a contract with them, so. Anyway, so I'd like to, uh, kick this down to our next meeting again, and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll talk a little bit further. Let me do some more homework on this one, okay? Any questions? Um, Ben, you wanna talk about the finances?
I do, my favorite thing to talk about. Um, we wrapped up in, uh, in January, we wrapped up our fiscal year, which, uh, went from July first of twenty-seventeen to June thirtieth of twenty-eighteen. And, uh, it was brought to my attention that we hadn't got over the, uh, the results of the, we'll call it a financial review. And so I think this is a good time to go over that, go over that in a public setting. Just a little bit of background, a town, a municipality of our size, does not have to go through a full audit, a traditional audit that a CPA firm would do. Instead, we're required to go through what they call an agreed-upon procedures, which every year, the state auditor's office gets together, and some people in the office say what they want the CPA firms to look into in a small town. So these agreed-upon procedures can change year to year, but basically, in the, uh, in the packet, you can go through and, and look at everything that they looked at. They're numbered, and, uh, that's exactly what the CPA firm looked at, and of that, they, they made three findings. One of, the first one was related to receipts, uh, credit card transactions that were, that went through the bank account, that we were not able to find receipts on. Uh, the second item was, uh, that the Utah Public Notice website was missing, uh, meeting. We had a meeting, and it was, and that was actually on the Utah, I bugged Michelle about that so many times, and she would repost it, and then it wouldn't, wouldn't go live, so that was actually on the Utah Public Notice, uh, it was, it was a technical glitch on their end. And the third item was a, uh, a budget, uh, overage in the police code enforcement category. So here, here's an example, you can see that we were twenty-two hundred dollars over budget, and this is something that we actually had to explain, I had to research. So they're, they're looking at where we're spending and how our budgets are allocated, and in this example, this situation, there was a number of transactions related to building permit fees that were just miscategorized under police and code enforcement, and so that served as sufficient explanation. This, uh, agreed-upon procedures report has been reported, has been submitted to the state auditor's office, and we are, we're in a good place, so. Any questions on the auditor's report?
I'm good, I, um, could I ask a unrelated question on the, the finances? Uh, when do you wanna start on the, uh, next year's budget? Should we start having a work meeting on that? What's your timeline on that?
Yeah, so I think, uh, it's on my shortlist right now, to, I think it makes the most sense for me to kind of have, uh, an initial review, just a, a very starting point, something where, where the council can have their, something that the council can start from. Um, but I think that would make sense in the next few weeks to have a work meeting related to the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty. I'm happy to, we could set a date if that would be actionable, if that's preferable to everybody. Or if we, we could just say generally, uh, first week in May.
Um, are we gonna do this in our regular town council meeting, call it a working, just put that on our agenda, something to do, does that sound right? Okay, it is May, good time to do that. What's a historical-
I think you have to start in May, isn't that what the requirement is?
Um, really the, the, because we're not going through a truth and taxation process this year, we just have to have a budget adopted by June twenty-second or something like that.
Beginning of May sounds-
Sounds reasonable, let's do the first meeting in May then for, for that, give you a target to have done and, uh-
Perfect. And before, prior to that, in advance of that meeting, a week or two prior, I'll have a, I'll have an email sent out with kind of my, my rough version.
Okay, that's what's gonna ask for. And then we can, uh, do some comments based on that. I like the way you do some of those things that you put together, you put reasons on the margins of why you're doing much building and, so.
Yeah.
Should be the May first meeting?
Yeah, May first. So May first, we'll call it a budget work meeting. And, um, how much time do you think that'll take? Should I leave the calendar clean for that or if there's something else going on, gonna put a couple of other things on there? What do you think that's gonna take?
You know, I think, I think, given that we're two months prior to needing to adopt a budget, it could be a shorter meeting and then, and then based on, on that, we may follow, may, may schedule follow-up meetings. Cause there's going to be action items, homework that I need to do, homework that you guys may want to do. It's not gonna be a one and done.
And it'll depend on when you get the email out. So if we have some advanced, uh, information on that, we could review it ahead of the meeting. Maybe have some corrections done prior to even to that first work meeting.
Yeah, good point.
Uh, all right, so we'll set that up for May first, um, to have our first budget meeting. So, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick, uh, quick question? Was there, uh, Rich Cop eleven ninety-three, was there an amount attached to the receipts that couldn't be found?
We're talking under a hundred dollars.
Oh, still receipt, oh, okay.
Yeah, this was, uh, immaterial.
Yep. Thank you.
But, um, events committee, yes?
Um, so April twentieth is our Easter egg hunt at twelve o'clock. And bring the kids, bring, uh, your money. Um, we're gonna donate all the proceeds to Louis Ford and his, um, battle and, uh, hopefully help him out with some medication money and, and just make his life a little bit easier. Um, and we're doing hot dogs and chips and water for about a fifty. And lots of eggs, lots of eggs. We, uh, spent several hours stuffing those puppies. So, um, bring your kids, bring grandkids, get the word out, thanks.
Did you say twelve o'clock?
Twelve o'clock.
And in the rumor that the Easter bunny month?
Yes.
I tried to hurt that rumor. Would you know anything about that?
I heard that rumor too.
I think we tried the bunny, um, costume, but, uh, onto Denny, it was quite comical, you had to be there.
Can't give away the secret.
Yeah, it was funny, all right.
Just a little bit. Anyway, um, planning commission, Cynthia Brownie, Michael McLaughlin. Planning commission, um, our next agenda.
The work meeting.
Work meeting on garages. I've gotta, I've gotta get to work on that myself, but, um, I, if you don't mind, I'll take a minute and talk about planning commission. One of the things that's gonna be on the seventy-fourth of this actual meeting is how big a garage that's attached to a home should be allowed to be in relation to the, uh, the house. Right now our code says fifty percent. We, uh, I have people asking me constantly, they want it bigger than that because it's not big enough to where you can have like, uh, you know, we've got plenty of land here, but we can't build a big, a garage big enough for an RV or, you know, a boat or something like that. And, um-
We're gonna hide projects.
I said that we don't need a, a garage limitation and that didn't go very well in the room.
Well, they can be able to hide their projects. People have cars, they can hide their projects, some people have to look at it complaining about the project.
That's, that's my point. And, uh, but I, I have, even since that meeting, I had a phone call from someone. They like traveling in a motorhome and they've got a forty-foot motorhome. They wanna build a garage that's sufficient size, they can do their slide outs, they can go in there and clean and do all their stuff. And they're looking for about a thirty by fifty along with their normal garage. And the square footage comes out to the point that they only wanna build an eighteen hundred square foot home. And so the garage ends up about three thousand feet and his home is eighteen hundred. And so this still doesn't fall in that realm of even buildable at a hundred percent to, and that's the ratio they're considering is one hundred percent is what they want limited to. I, I just like, if, if you got any input on it, you know, show up in the planning commission. I'd just like to see them at least push that envelope to at least a hundred and twenty-five, maybe even a hundred and fifty percent. Because, you know, if we get this, one couple that called me, they can't even build what they wanna build. And they're just, they, they probably are gonna be part timers because the rest of time they're in their motorhome.
What's the percentage of your horse barn versus your home?
I, you know, we didn't have to do that because it was, uh, ag property, but, um, it's six thousand square foot barn. You know, the, the roof area of the house was, uh, I think, uh, I can't remember.
Well, just point in, is people have different options, whether it's horses or, or rebuilding old cars or parking a-
Well, see, the barn is different too. It, you never remember the, we're talking about on the square footage, we're talking about an attached garage. Why would we have a limit on how big an attached garage can be? Because it's going to be attached to the house.
It's part of the house, what's the matter?
Exactly, and that's-
Would you, would you rather have all the junk out in front of the house or have it inside somebody's big garage?
If someone wants to put down a four-car garage and have four car garages, it's pretty deep. It's still gonna look like a house.
Long as they're linked to the-
Long as it's made of the house.
And, and these guys are, uh, really, I was fighting with them, uh, mostly Frank. But, uh, basically, some of these guys were just fighting that a hundred percent's just, you know, all we have to have. And I just, I just disagree with it still. I just think that we can push the envelope a little bit more, so.
Well, no, no other city in Washington County has a limit on the size of garage you have. That's, that's part of your house. They do when you're talking about a detached structure, but the, the garage is actually attached or part of your house. There's no other city or municipality in Washington County or Utah that I know of.
If you guys are interested in that subject, you know, be sure to attend that meeting. Fire department, fire chief.
I don't have anything.
Um, we gotta take the Robbins off of here. Um, the plains water, again, you wanna share?
Uh, just all, uh, pumps and wells are in good shape. It's been a wet and slow spring for us, hope things will change.
Yeah, I'd like to see some building permits happening. Code enforcement, Rich Soski, again, you wanna share?
Uh, a few liners in the fire. I spent a little time on some property this afternoon and took a look and, uh, I'm still working on that. So, uh, I'll probably have to send a notice. Other than that, no.
Okay. And, uh, roads and storm drainage, I do have a, just something on that real quick I'll share is that, um, engineers will be here on Friday, will be driving around, looking at, uh, roads and storm drainage regarding the FEMA funding, application that we're doing. And they'll be here on Friday, we're gonna be spending most of the day, um, driving around, looking at these projects that we have to do. And, um, trying to expedite that paperwork. And I don't think there's any mosquitoes yet. Public comments. I, uh-
Mosquitoes?
Make a motion that we open public comments?
Mosquitoes or comments?
Comments.
There's no, they have a meeting. I make a motion we open public comments?
Second.
Aye.
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 So, yes, Mark Soski.
And Margaret Soski, one or two for a whistle opinion. Is, is there any way that when, um, you know, these contractors come in to get their building permits or the, the homeowners or, that they can talk to whoever is building the house when they have their trailers? That they, they kind of go through the neighborhood a little bit slower? Cause I chased one guy, couldn't get the, the, um, who, who's, who was driving, but I got the trailer's license. It was a big fifth, you know, like fifth wheel flatbed trailer and, and they, I, they, I, I was going down that strip forty miles an hour trying to catch them and, and, and they were just like flying down there. And, and they come, you know, like through our neighborhood, some, some go slow, but a lot of them just fly through there.
They're out to go.
You know, I, I don't, you know, some of them are good and some of them are just really nasty. They, they just fly through the neighborhood and, and you can just see them, you know, going down the road and turning and just big flume of dust going everywhere and they don't, they don't care.
That's not it at all, cause I drive a trailer and I pull them all the time.
I said some people go slow.
I'm some point. I can drive twenty miles an hour, which is five hundred our town's speed limit on these dirt roads. And we have all these extra tires behind us and it makes a dust ball.
I understand that, I understand that.
I'm not gonna drive five.
But I'm going fast.
Real fast.
Oh, I'm not the only one.
At twenty miles an hour, that thing makes dust like if you're doing forty or fifty.
No, he's not going twenty.
In dust.
There is a difference if you're going forty and I'm sure a lot of them are going that fast. Safety issue. If the guy's putting out dust at twenty miles an hour, I don't think anybody would ever be complaining.
No.
They're going sixty.
There, I swear, I was going four, four, five down this road and I couldn't even catch them.
I've seen them repeatedly.
I mean, you know, I, I, if there could just, you know, maybe tell them to, you know, maybe they just think that they're out there, that they can just, you know, it's dirt road, we can just do whatever we want, I don't know. But it's, it's kind of like, um, it's really bad, some, some of them are, some of them aren't. I think might, might even stop one of the, um, the guys hauling dirt one time because they were flying down the road so, so fast.
That, that big stretch right there, be, be good stretch to get chips sealed or paved somehow, that, that'd be a nice stretch.
I'd like to see if there's very chips in, down that corner. I'd like to do-
That's a, that's a really bad stretch.
On that committee, I just want that to be on the hit list of what's it gonna take to do just that much of the road? It'd be awesome just to go down to that corner. I think it's washboards so fast, it's just a nasty road and-
Well, the reason why washboards, if ever you will actually understand this, washboards actually come from speeding. People think that I'm gonna go faster and it's gonna take care of it. They're so full of crap, it's not funny. They would legitimately drive twenty-five. That road would take a month to washboard, not four days.
Yeah.
But they just drive forty on it and the washboards, it takes-
Yeah, Tofa X and U P F that too. And I'm not just saying it's, but sometimes, you know, just recently, like I said, I chased somebody down and I, I couldn't get the driver, but I got the license to, for the flatbed.
I didn't see it, he was going so fast.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, Rich Cop eleven ninety-three, this actually goes like out to Junior. Um, I had a dude, a couple of doors, I was in my garage and smelling smoke and I actually got ash in my garage. I'd go outside and chew, not my, uh, the neighbor right next guy, the guy before him was actually burning tumbleweeds and it was like windy as hell outside.
I haven't had any calls up to your area for your permits?
Oh, so just one question, like, I, I know it's not common sense, like, you know, I know one thing is you gotta watch the ozone there right before you burn, but the main thing is the winds. Like, I, like, is it online, like where it says, you know, watch your wind conditions?
No, if they, so if they don't, if they don't get a burn permit or anything, then they're just doing wrong, period.
Well, no, he said he had, he, he had spoken to you.
I haven't had a person in your area.
Wow.
Just call Junior, he'll tell you what the money got, so he'll take care of it.
Well, I said to the dude, look, man, you gotta watch the wind, you know, I got ash in my garage and I'm two doors over. So he, he, he said, well, I spoke to the fire chief, I said, okay, fine, well, if you call him up and say, look, I can't burn today because it's too windy, can you give me a permit tomorrow? He would appreciate the fact that you didn't burn.
Almost every single person I've talked to this year, I've told them to watch out for the wind. I didn't have them wind every time, so.
Yeah, so at least he backed off, he stopped burning and he waited until Saturday where there was no wind.
Doors down?
Yeah, so it wasn't, uh, directly, it was, it was two doors to the, uh-
East, the west.
Well, to the west.
But I got, I finished that, I have to ask my boss next time.
I haven't got anybody on your street.
Wow, so he, I guess he just, uh-
Yeah, I got to do my permits, but I'm pretty sure I haven't had anybody on-
At least he put the damn thing out. I was just curious if, if they're made aware that it's common sense, you know what I'm saying, but-
Any other comments?
Yeah, just call me.
All right. Any other comments?
I make a motion we close public comments?
Aye.
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 And favorite one?
I make a motion we adjourn. Aye.
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 Thanks, everybody.